Ready? Are we ready?
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Board of Education. Just as a quick reminder that masks are required inside school buildings this evening. Thank you very much. I would like to start by explaining the format of tonight's meeting. The Board of Education provides two opportunities for you to express your ideas and share your thoughts. The first will be after we receive an update from our superintendent. The second will be after our meeting has concluded. Both sessions will be thirty minutes in duration, and all speakers will be limited to three minutes to give as many people a chance to speak as possible. Please approach any one of the microphones in the front of the auditorium. Please state your name and address prior to beginning your comments so the district clerk can accurately reflect the minutes of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Rogers will let you know when you have thirty seconds left so you can wrap up your comments before the end of the three minutes. You must be stationed at a microphone to express your ideas and share your thoughts with the board. The Board of Education respects the varied opinions of the community and will provide a comfortable and safe environment. Any behaviors that threaten the integrity of tonight's meeting will not be tolerated and will cause the BOE to adjourn the meeting. Complaints or challenges should follow procedures listed under Policies fourteen hundred, fourteen ten, and/or fourteen forty, which are included on the materials table. Thank you for your anticipated courtesy and cooperation. In the event of fire and/or if you hear the fire bell, you must leave the building. The first ten rows in the auditorium should use the exit to my left. Those in the back of the room should use the rear doors and exit the building to the left. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. D'Amico, may I have a motion to amend the order of business?
I make a motion to amend the order of business contained in the public meeting agenda set forth in Policy two-three-five-zero to allow the board to vote upon the consent agenda, review and vote on discussion and action items, and consider discussion items prior to the superintendent's update during the October sixth, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the Board of Education.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of items one, A through C, two, A, and three, A through D, be approved as a whole with action recorded separately.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So we have the opportunity tonight to discuss the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two New York State School Boards Association resolutions for the virtual convention beginning October eighteenth. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Lively at this point in time, as she is our representative at this meeting.
Thank you all for allowing me to serve as a representation for the Resolution Annual Business Meeting. I, by virtual, we, I was a part of the annual resolutions meeting last week, which New York State School Boards Association, Nassau and Suffolk County, met virtually to go over the resolutions that will be brought to the business meeting on the eighteenth of October. We had discussed as a board, went through all the resolutions, and didn't have any changes as what the New York Nassau County and Suffolk County School Boards Association had recommended. There were resolutions that were recommended, there were some that were not recommended. At the meeting, we went through every one, and the resolutions stayed as put. There was no changes to the resolutions. So with that being said, if any of our board members had read through and had a difference of opinion, then I could bring that forward. Does anyone have any questions or statements on the resolutions as they were presented? No? Okay. At the meeting, we also, some late resolutions were brought to the table. There were five of them. The resolutions, however, were not vetted because of the time it came to the resolution committee. They will be presented at the annual business meeting. Unless they're vetted and the information is surveyed and recognized that it's true or false, then I will vote in opposition to the resolutions unless I find that they are vetted and that the information is true to be told. So is everyone good with that? Okay. I'll also use my judgment based on our board's decisions for the resolutions that were suggested as being recommended and those that were not. And if anything comes to mind or suggested from anybody bringing any questions up, I will use my judgment and then vote accordingly. If that's okay with everybody, we'll do that. Okay. Okay. So thank you very much for allowing me to bring these forward. And I'll bring back the results after the business meeting, which is on the eighteenth, virtually held. If anyone liked to, they can't vote because there's only one voting delegate. If anyone would like to be a part of that, there is a link that we can get to be able to attend that meeting as well. It's just one member from the district is able to vote.
Yes.
Okay. You got that, Mike?
Yep.
Okay, great. So thank you very much, and I'm looking forward for the resolution meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Lively, for always being a representative for that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Much appreciated.
Yep. We work hard to put it together, and it's all about the resolutions and what we can do in our state.
Okay. Thank you. So last meeting, the Board of Education was presented with a petition. I would like to address that petition at this moment. So this message is intended to provide district residents with an update as to our consideration of the requests made by some members of the Farmingdale community to join current litigation challenging New York State's student mask mandate. Recently, some members of our community urged our Board of Education to join the litigation commenced by the Massapequa School Board, which challenges the student mask mandate issued by the New York State Department of Health. As a result, administration contacted the law firm that represents Massapequa and asked that it brief the Farmingdale Board of Education on all pertinent issues regarding the ongoing litigation. However, the law firm informed us that it would not meet with us because of a conflict of interest that they explained existed due to a separate legal matter. The Farmingdale Board of Education concluded that it would neither enlist separate counsel to explore joining the ongoing litigation nor become a party to it. Collectively as a board, we reached this decision after considering multiple issues, including the notion that the Farmingdale School District would nonetheless stand to be impacted from a court ruling in favor of Massapequa despite not being a party to the ongoing litigation. Also, last meeting, the cheerleaders came to the microphone. Questions about selective classification were presented, and I would like to let them know that we, the Board of Education, has met regarding that matter, and we have agreed to recommend to the policy committee to review our policy on selective classification and report back to the board with their findings. Mr. Defendini?
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. Yes, again, the policy committee will, per board direction, begin to entertain the conversation around selective classification, and we will certainly be back, you know, to the Board of Education within the next several weeks, letting you know what those recommendations might look like for the board's first review of the policy committee's recommendations to changes to that policy. So again, it's been a longstanding issue that the Board of Education has been considered. I know some of the dailers are out there today, so thank you again for your participation last week, and thank you to the board for your continued work in service to this community. I'm looking out in the crowd right now, and we have a special friend out there today, Ms. Samantha Black. Whether or not you know it or not, my friend, you were just approved by the Board of Education for a successful tenure here at Farmingdale School District. Congratulations, Sam, very well deserved. Thank you for all of your work and for what you will continue to do for the Farmingdale School District. Thank you. Also, Mr. Goldberg had the privilege last week to actually attend our band camp through a tremendous amount of work by the advisors who do run band camp, over thirty volunteers who came up to support our students. We had a total of nearly three hundred people, just shy of three hundred people up there, and they did just an absolutely superb job, not only preparing the students for the marching band show, which everyone had a chance to watch at this last football game, but on top of that, the experiences that they have at band camp are really tremendous. For those people, and I know many board members have had a chance to see band camp in action if you've had your own children that have been a part of it, it is tremendous. The seniors send-off, the volleyball game, you know, all the traditions that have become an institution now to be a member of our band is just absolutely tremendous. So again, with special thanks to Gina, to Matt, and to Dave and all the other people that made band camp. But reality this year, it was a tremendous lift under the circumstances, and very proud that we were able to make that happen for our students. I know, based upon watching their own behaviors and talking to them while I was up there, they truly appreciated the effort. So thank you again for your support. Pep rally is coming up this coming Friday, a week from, I'm sorry, a week from this Friday. Our pep rally will be happening. We're working to orchestrate the pep rally in a way that we're able to have it outdoors so that, again, we can have a large number of participation from our community as well as our student body. So again, stay tuned for more information from the high school. Last week, there was a couple of questions that came to us with regard to open house, CSEs, and other types of events, and what is our policy with regard to having outside visitors inside of our building? What we've tried to do since the very beginning of the school year is value in-person live instruction, to try to hold that sacred, to try to not allow anything to get in the way of the ability for our students to be able to be consistently in school, our staff to be consistently in school. Although we've been wildly successful, I think, this year at maintaining that environment, we have had a number of quarantines, which were almost entirely, except for one case, due to a student or a staff member, in fact, being positive themselves. We did have one instance, one of our elementary schools, this past week, where we did see an instance of internal spread, but outside of that, we have been very successful. We're trying to minimize that circumstance from happening, which is why we're restricting contact with our students, contact with our staff during or after the academic day. There are instances after the school day where we will absolutely welcome the community into the building, board meetings, PTA meetings. We're trying to protect the sanctity of the classrooms, keeping people out wherever we can because all you need is one instance where somebody brings it in unbeknownst to them. There'd be no ill intent, obviously, I'm sure people would do all the responsible things, but unbeknownst to somebody, they bring the virus in, winds up infecting a few people, and all of a sudden, you have a couple of kids or a staff member that's out on quarantine, which impacts then that live instructional environment. We're doing everything that we can to try to avoid that. I know it's an inconvenience, I know that there's a beauty in being able to be a parent and be connected to the live in-person setting. We're going to continue to watch it as the year goes along, but again, we're trying to protect the sanctity of these buildings and keep that live instructional environment, keep our students and keep our staffs free from this virus so we can keep that going for as long as we possibly can. So again, I appreciate the comments that came from the community last night. I share that sentiment and that I want that live environment too for our community members, but at this time, we're going to continue to hold to, you know, our current protocols until we can be as assured as possible that we're not going to be in a place where that instance would cause any interruption to the academic environment. The last item that I have, I'm just going to be brief. This has been honestly a longstanding dream of mine. Since I started as the superintendent three years ago, COVID has been a tremendous interrupter to this dream that I've had, but we are now far enough along. We are in control enough of what's going on that we can begin to embark on this work, and we're going to refer to it as Portrait of a Graduate. For a long time, obviously, I grew up in this community, I've spent my whole life here. I know what I believe to be, the intrinsic qualities and values that I believe are part of being a daler. You all have your ideas as to what that might look like. Our community, our teachers, our administrators, our support staff members all have an idea as to what it means to be a daler. But we really needed some time to come together in a really thoughtful way to make sure that all of those value systems are on the table and we understand what those value systems are so that every single Farmingdale graduate, we have that same set of high expectations, you know? I use the example all the time, that we say things like, "Community service are important." And no doubt, community service is something that we do value here in Farmingdale. I've seen it on my own terms a number of times, especially through St. Baldry's, which is something that really gets this community going and gets a lot of participation. But we don't have that as something that's essential for all of our graduates. It's something that we encourage, but it's not an essential item. It's not a graduation requirement. It's not something that we believe needs to be structured in such a way that every graduate has to go through that. And one of the things that we think is important as we come off the end of COVID, as we begin to plan out what our years might look like together, building that dream together. And I'm going to turn it over to Bill a little bit so that he can kind of talk you through what that process is going to look like, how we're going to solicit feedback from stakeholder groups, how we're going to begin to encourage that conversation through various tools that we have access to here in the district so that hopefully at the end of this thing, in the months to come, we're going to be able to come back to the Board of Education and provide a really accurate snapshot of exactly what it means to be a daler. What are those things, and how are we measuring the level of success we have in attaining whatever those items are that we believe are essential? So I'll turn it over to Bill to talk a little bit about the process. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Defendini. And as the board may recall, as Mr. Defendini alluded to, we had done a presentation in January of two thousand twenty regarding this work, and my goodness, so much has changed since then, and we're really thrilled to relaunch this work. It's going to commence really soon. First, with the reactivation of our district-wide Shared Decision Making Committee. We've started the process of putting that team together. We're looking to hold our first meeting in October to begin the planning process. I just want to share some ideas around this, but of course, the Shared Decision Making Committee will be the structure of this district that really helps to shepherd a lot of this work and the thinking. The Portrait of a Graduate is both a process and a product. It will allow for a community-based conversation on the skills, the knowledge, the dispositions, and the competencies that we believe all Farmingdale graduates should possess by the time they graduate Farmingdale High School. And frankly, what I think is most exciting about this work is, the superintendent alluded to, is a community-based conversation and community-based vision. When I use the word "community," what we're talking about are parents and guardians of current students, parents and guardians of former students, parents and guardians of future students, our K-12 faculty, administration staff, our students, our Farmingdale alumni networks, our community members, business owners, community leaders, post-secondary institutions, workforce development groups. And as these conversations unfold across the community, I think we're going to have what's called a snowball effect, where we continue to engage folks that have really interesting points of view and perspectives within Farmingdale, which makes it an incredibly rich experience. Again, this is both a process, it's a long one. You know, this isn't something we turn around and finish by the end of November, but it's ultimately a product. And what I think we'll have at the end of this long experience is a, what we like to call a north star, even a shared roadmap for all of our students. And what's really helpful around this is when we have that shared roadmap, I think we'll be able to align all that we do, align our professional development, align our systems and structures, align our budgets, align our decisions and things like that. So the next step, which is critical here, is, like I said before, is the Shared Decision Making Committee will start that work in October, not just the Portrait of a Graduate, there's more for us to do there too, but I wanted to announce to the board that we're excited to bring back the Shared Decision Making Committee at the district level. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are.
I'm just glad to hear we're getting back on track.
Me too.
Yeah, truly, truly an exciting time again on the back end now of COVID or at the place we are with regard to COVID, I shouldn't say that. It just feels right at this point in time that we now engage in things that are, again, part of our foundational elements, the things that get us excited every single day to come to work, the things that I think at the end of the day will really build that roadmap that we can then use over the course of time to make sure that every single graduate, you know, all means all, every one of our students really, we believe, has the ability to do this work, and we're very excited for this next step in our journey with the Board of Education and our entire community. So, thank you, that's my update, Mr. Goldberg.
Thank you, Mr. Defendini, thank you, Mr. Brennan. I'd like to open the meeting for the first public participation. Please be sure to clearly state your name and address when you approach the microphone. As a reminder, public participation will be limited to thirty minutes. Each individual speaker will have three minutes in which to ask their questions or to make any statements. The district clerk will hold the timer for us. If we do not get to all of the speakers during the first thirty minutes, we will reopen later in the meeting to continue. The meeting will now open for thirty minutes.
Jeff, good evening. Twenty, address on file. Says nothing to do with the mask debate. I'm going to read a little excerpt from an email that's in public record from one of your members from your PTA, and you know who you are. Goes, "On a separate note, I thought the meeting got out of hand and almost took away from the great things we do have going on in the district. Maybe people should be aware, public comments are a courtesy, not a mandated part of the meeting." Which is true. You know, but this is like totalitarian bureaucrats deciding that they don't want to hear what people have to say in a public forum, a form of censorship, let's just say. You know, but you had to do what you did to keep the narrative going because you didn't like my opinion. So, you know, if somebody in the audience feels insulted or abused because of my critique of the district's former Director of Information Technology or the audiovisual department, or your security issues based on my thirty-year career, all right? If they're offended, it's their problem, okay? But to go back into this email, that man that spoke was extremely rude and offensive, and he made us feel uncomfortable. One mother asked me to walk her to the car because she was scared of him and said she will never be back to a meeting, okay? That was to go along with your narrative, okay? She wrote that email to you, okay? And first of all, then, if she was so scared, she could have had security escorted to the car. Second of all, if she was an adult, she would walk up to me after the meeting and ask me to elaborate, all right, on what I have to say. But, listen, I was not expressing dislike, I was expressing opposition. It is the board's lack of and improper actions proving not only that they dislike me, but their discriminatory treatment towards me. Meanwhile, I was bringing up very valid points, especially about your security.
Mr. Roth, it's thirty seconds more?
How many more seconds?
Thirty seconds?
Thirty seconds, thank you. Well, I'll get to the second on the second petition. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come up to speak at this time?
Hello, my name is Gabriella Ambrosio, and I live at eighty-eight Violet Street, Farmingdale. Although I haven't been on the Farmingdale Varsity Cheer Team for very long, the connections I've grown with my teammates is a bond that I've always imagined having with a group of people that I can be myself around, have fun, and overall live my life. I've learned that cheer is much more than I thought it was, and I was able to find something in my life that brings me joy and something to look forward to every day. Tonight, I came to talk about how our team needs to be able to pull up the eighth graders. I've seen the eighth graders practice, and let me say, these girls are more than talented at the sport, and our team could really use them to increase our chance at having a team that succeeds and does well. Winning states with this team is a dream of mine, and the only way possible is for us to achieve and by pulling up the eighth graders. Thank you for your time.
Barbara Booth, my record's on, not record, my address is on file. And for the FBI, I am not a domestic terrorist, in case anyone's wondering. In May, June of two thousand twenty-one, the Farmingdale District applied for COVID grants under a new law called the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one. The law provides a one-time response and relief supplement, relief grant for the twenty, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one school year under the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplement Appropriations Act. It also provides for a two-year future funding grant for preparedness and response through June, two thousand twenty-three. By accepting this money, the district must now comply with existing and unknown future directives and guidance from the HHS Secretary. They must assist the US government in implementation and enforcement of federal orders related to quarantine and isolation. They must provide the CDC copies and access to COVID-nineteen data collected, and future directives will specify what data is included. So what are the implications? Well, to start, there are no metrics given on how to end these mandates. In fact, the CDC recently deleted mass phase-out from their guidance on their website. It includes the expansion of government-run healthcare programs into schools that will blend with medical facilities. On-premise government testing and vaccine will become the new normal for our children. Accepting this money ended local control for the district. Our right to have elected representation was eroded by the loss of this local control. Our rights to have elected representation was eroded by the loss of this local control. I stood here last month and stated that we will now have no recourse and are run by unelected entities. Our medical privacy, gone. Our parental rights, gone. Please, for the record, correct me if I'm wrong on anything I stated above. We have the following questions for the school board. What, when does this agreement expire? What are all our current and future requirements of the district under this grant? How have the funds been spent or are slated to be spent? Have benchmarks or metrics to end the mandates been provided? Can this agreement be nullified, or is there an exit available to the district prior to those two years? When was this voted on by the Farmingdale Board of Education? Under the CDC agreement, have the board members been threatened with legal action by NICE to comply with the Department of Health mandates? If so, then board members who are under duress also have a conflict of interest and should be removed or resign. If the questions stated above are in fact answered in the affirmative, it is clear that zero action will be taken to protect our children and parental rights while they are in this district. So in conclusion, the 9.3 million COVID relief funds you accepted is the real reason we are not seeing any action. Without any communication or transparency coming from the board, we can only assume that you sold our kids out for about $1,700 ahead. Thank you.
Ms. Booth, if you wouldn't mind doing me a favor in sharing that with the questions with me, we'd be happy to get back to you.
Mr. DeFendini, I may have gotten most of them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, we can make the copies. Ms. Booth, do you need this back?
Eric Merrill, 25 Dale Drive, Farmingdale, New York. Just to follow up on that, I'm hopeful that it was a lapse in just not reading through the edict properly and that there is a way to get out of this. But if there's not, then we'll need to know HIPAA violations, HIPAA rules, and what the students and the parents of this district need to do in order to keep their children safe when these mandates come down. And as we've seen, I'm no fortune teller, but New York seems to follow California's edicts and unconstitutional law mandates very closely. And we've seen that San Francisco and the state of California are now mandating vaccines as well as the masks. So if that does happen and we have a mass de-enrollment of the school, what does that then do for the district going forward next year and the year after that if we can't get out of this SOS basic program? So those are my questions, and if you could answer them by next board meeting, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brenna Miller. I live on 212 North Maple Street in Massapequa. I've been a part of the varsity cheer team since freshman year. Cheers became a huge part of my life, and I look forward to going every day. The bond we share is like family, and we all want to succeed. We are here today to enforce the fact that we need to pull up the eighth graders for our competitive season. We take our sport very seriously and want to strive. For our team to meet its full potential, we need more flyers. The eighth graders have many very capable, talented flyers. Every other school district in our division is able to pull up the eighth graders. This gives their team an advantage over ours. I would love to feel the joy of winning states with my team that I love so much. Thank you for your time.
Pam Valenti, my address is on file. Last month, I came here and I asked if you could please have in-person meetings for parents, and now I'm being told that we can't. That does not make sense to me in any way, shape, or form. What makes me, a parent and a taxpayer, any more of a threat to anyone in this building or on these grounds? I've offered to meet on the field, in the playground, out a window, behind a barrier. I'm not a sex offender, I'm not a domestic terrorist. I am a mother who cares about her child and wants to talk to the people who are looking after her child in person. What makes me a threat? Do you need, do you need a COVID test? Do you need a background check? Why can't I, after school, because as you've mentioned, there are exceptions after school, and I know people who've had meetings during school, and I know there are vendors who come here and security guards. Why are they allowed to come here, but I'm not? And as I mentioned last month, my meeting on Zoom had the majority of the people with their cameras off. How disrespectful and unprofessional is that? If any of you have children or grandchildren or friends of children with special needs, you know how hard it is. You know how gut-wrenching it can be to hear these things about your child. Now imagine doing it over a screen. In June, I was presented with a picture my daughter drew of her anxiety. It was this big, black, horrible-looking blob, and it said, "You're a loser. You have no friends. I hate you." And I had to ask the person to put it closer to their camera so I can see it. Can you imagine how that is as a parent? Can you imagine that was how I was informed that my child is having these horrible thoughts about herself? And when I asked for a copy to see it up close in person, I was denied. Because, you know, we don't want to go against her privacy. We don't want to deny her trust. I'm her parent. I can't be in a room with people to talk about my concerns and her needs. I refuse to accept that answer. I refuse to accept that I can't come into a building or outside to meet with people to talk about my child. We have rights. You and the people who work here have jobs that need to be done. And until I see a law or until I see evidence that my being in a building or on school grounds is going to be cause for harm, I expect to be in this building for my next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, if nobody else would like to speak, I call for a motion to approve the minutes of the September 22nd, 2021 meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 22nd, 2021 regular meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mrs. Rogers, have we received any correspondence this month?
Mr. Goldberg, the Board of Education received a number of emails this past month requesting that the district participate in the legal action regarding mask mandates. The board also received a number of emails that opposed the participation. There was an email regarding mask breaks and a second email regarding a specific issue related to mask accommodations. A parent expressed concerns regarding the possibility of mandated vaccines. A resident asked for an individual meeting with two board members regarding the Facilities Advisory Committee. A student expressed her hope for a change to allow the eighth graders to participate in the competition cheer team. That was all this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rogers. Are there any committee reports from the board?
I just have on Tuesday, next Tuesday, the Republic Airport Committee will be meeting via Zoom. That will be at 7:00 PM. If you'd like the link for the meeting, it's a pretty interesting meeting. It takes place, it's on the airport website, but that will be Tuesday at 7:00 PM. At the library, nothing has really changed since last week.
I know Mr. DeFendini already brought up the marching band camp, but I have to, I have to just make comment on that. Having it been my first year as a chaperone, having a ninth grader, it was an absolute pleasure to be a part of it. I had always heard about how the relationships build amongst the students and the staff, but you never really know it until you're actually there. How they fostered friendships was so amazing and so incredible, and I was so proud to watch my son and so many other kids, approximately 250 of them. And then, of course, as a parent, being there, making relationships with other parents, and it truly, truly was a family. And I, I'd have to mention, you know, when they arrived on Thursday, they arrived in torrential downpours, these poor kids. And rehearsal had to be canceled that evening because everything was just saturated. They absolutely made the best of it. I would be terrible to not mention the amazing staff, the teachers that were a part of that. Ms. Palatieri, Mr. Demasi, Mr. Abrams, Mr. Scanzey, Ms. Lieberman made a appearance to help out. I hope I'm not missing anybody. Ms. Tower. They came together a day late. I watched them. They were all over the place on the field, these 250 students. By the next day, for the evening, they performed the full routine with the Dalesses. I just could not believe my eyes. They worked so, so hard. These teachers have it down to a science. And again, these kids, they walked away with so much more than just knowing how to march. They walked away, in my opinion, really understanding what Dalesses mean. So it was a proud moment as a parent, it was a proud moment as a board trustee. And again, I have to give tremendous appreciation to not just the teachers, but the chaperones as well, because it's not easy being in a cabin for four days, and, you know, you kind of rough it up a little bit. It's not like Farmingdale. But I just, I had to piggyback your remarks, Mr. DeFendini, because it truly was special. And one last thing before I end, it is for all abilities, children. I encourage, if you have students coming up to the high school and they've been playing band, music is very special to me, but I've watched how, how much these kids grew and thrived that weekend. Please encourage them to stay. It's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful experience, and the upperclassmen really take the younger kids kind of under their wing and treat them so kindly. It'll be probably one of the best experiences your kids will ever experience in Farmingdale. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I'll just piggyback on it. I attended the annual SEPTA meet and greet. It was back in person this year. And just amazing how many of our administrators, our principals, APs, directors, speech pathologists, I mean, I can, you know, OTP, I can, I can keep going on, how many district employees were there, how many parents showed up. And it's always a very, you know, gut-wrenching night when parents stand up and talk about their, their children, but it's always an amazing night. And I just, you know, want to thank SEPTA for putting that together. It's always an amazing evening and just phenomenal to see how many, as I said before, how many district employees are there supporting our students. Phenomenal.
Okay, oops, sorry about that. Oh, okay. So Farmingdale Youth Council, the winter program is underway. You can go to our website at farmingdaleyouthcouncil.org to see the programs that the winter has. They have cultural arts, gymnastics, sewing, swim, just to name a few. There's still availability to get enrolled in that for your kids if you want to, so check our website. The, most of our other organizations in youth council are underway, soccer, hawks, PAL, CYO, and aquatics. And you could either check the Farmingdale Youth Council website or the individual websites to get more information on those programs that they're having run right now. The Farmingdale Chamber of Commerce just ran a document shredding event last Saturday. A lot of people came by for only the two hours that it was, no, 10, 11, 12, three hours that it was ran. We took in a lot of shred, a lot of paper was shredded. We get a company to do that. It's all confidential. And a lot of the proceeds, most of the proceeds will go towards scholarships for our Farmingdale High School seniors and also some other events or businesses, not businesses, but need of our community. So that, we didn't charge for it, we got donations, so it was great to see people really giving a donation to help our students and our, our community. We run the shredding event twice a year and save your papers or get your papers together for our next event, which probably be more in the spring. Farmingdale Chamber is also very busy with having ribbon cuttings for many of our businesses. The amount of businesses that join is unbelievable. We work very, very diligently, helping our kids with, with not only scholarships, but opportunities for, to have internships and such with members of our high school for their businesses in our community. Also, the Farmingdale Chamber is having on the 14th of October next week, a comedy night, where, I don't know if there's tickets left, you could check the website if you, if you wish to attend, and those donations will also go to the Farmingdale High School Scholarships Fund. One other thing that you might be interested in for the Chamber is they have a Fall Family Fun Day, and it's going to be held on October 30th with many events going on in, in our village. The rain date would be the 31st. You could check the Farmingdale Chamber website for that. But we'll have a parade starting off at North Side at 2:00. So anyone interested in coming down and being at parade, from North Side to the Village Green, costume and all, bring your kids, bring whoever you want, dress up and join in the fun festivities. The parade will kick off at 2:00. Come down into the Village Green, where they'll have pony rides and petting zoo and a lot of opportunities to do some marching crafts. And Chamber will be handing out goodies for, for the kids, and it's just a real fun day to be together. So come down and join that, and I think it runs till 4:00 in the afternoon. And it's sponsored by the Farmingdale Business Improvement District and all the businesses in our community that put together their, their wares for our community to, to come and have fun. So come on and join us. We'll be in costume and try to figure out who we are.
I'm sure your costume will not disappoint as always.
So that's all I have.
Just to add to the day of festivities, if you're around, St. Luke's here in Farmingdale will be sponsoring a trunk or treat again from 10 to 12. It's a great event. Last year, we did something a little different. We had lots of trunks, but then we also had activities for the children. We had some games and face painting and coloring sheets and we had some tattoos and so on and so forth. So if you'd like to start the day off early, because those of you have small children, tend, they tend not to let you sleep late on a Saturday, so starting your day at 12 or 1:00 is late for them, so feel free to come down at 10:00. We'd love to have you there.
One more, one more, Mike. And also is able to attend the Farmingdale Council or PTAs meeting this last, I think it was last week. These women and men are hard at work putting everything together for our PTAs, and I appreciate, we all appreciate the work you do in the organization. So, that's all I have, but it's once a month, and Mike and I are able to usually attend that, and thank you for all who participate in that.
Thank you, everyone. I'd like to open the meeting for the second public participation. Once again, please be sure to clearly state your name and address when you approach the microphone. As a reminder, public participation will be limited to 30 minutes, and each individual speaker will have three minutes in which to ask their questions or to make any statements. The district clerk will hold the time before us. The meeting is now open for public participation.
The meeting is now open for public participation.
Good evening. Good evening, school board. My name is Kevin McKenna, and I am here representing Town of Oyster Bay News in order to, to livestream this meeting so that, for convenience to residents that can't be here so that they could listen. And I've been sitting over here and I have a very up-to-date phone. And I have people that are online right now telling me that they cannot hear you. And as I sit there, I don't know how about, how, I actually do have a little bit of a hearing problem. I know that the school pays for an audiovisual technician to monitor these meetings, and I am having a hard time hearing what you say because the masks, the masks make it even more difficult with the microphone. So I would ask for you to have consideration for, you should check that. You should have your audiovisual technician make sure that people can hear, because people online are saying they can't hear. So if you can have them or if they're listening right now, if they can raise your volume, it sounds like the meeting's almost over, it's too late, but it would be something that would be nice so that you concur with people being able to hear. Thank you.
We'd be happy to look into, you know, that concern if people are having a hard time. Again, just as a reminder, the meetings are recorded and posted up on the website for anyone that might have had a hard time. They're also transcribed as well for anybody that does choose to read through the transcripts of the meeting. But again, point noted, we will certainly look into that and make sure that people at home have an opportunity to be able to listen to and see the meeting from home, which is the purpose of, of why we established this, this opportunity.
Were you referring to your Facebook, your, your live feed or the district's live feed? Because I'm getting messages from district live feed that, that it's fine. Okay, but are you referring to, we are livestreaming this ourselves right now? So were you referring to that? Okay. Okay, Mr. McKenna. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. McKenna. Would anybody else like to speak?
Hello, my name is Ellis Hafhauser. My address is 16 Lee Drive, Farmingdale, New York. I'm a freshman this year and I'm currently thankful to be on the team this year. Cheerleading is extremely important, is an extremely important sport to me. All my teammates are very hardworking and amazing people. I love getting to cheer every day after school. We need to pull up eighth graders this year to help the team this year. Almost every other team we compete against pulls up eighth graders and it gives them a bigger advantage. Competing and winning with your team is one of the best feelings you can get. It would give us the biggest opportunity to win this year if we pull up the eighth graders. So please allow the eighth graders to cheer on the team this year. Thank you for their time and thank you for listening.
And girls, while we absolutely encourage your participation, we love hearing from every one of you, we just want you to know that your voices were heard. And again, the policy committee is going to be meeting on the decisions around selective classification. The board did give the go-ahead for the policy committee to begin to work on that particular policy that allows middle schoolers the opportunity to move up. So again, I just, we, we love hearing from you, but I just wanted to give you that news just to make sure that you heard that from the beginning of the meeting and you got that message loud and clear.
Hi, Pam Valenti again. My address is on file. I just wanted to point one thing out. You keep on referring to the petition that I and hundreds of Farmingdale residents signed as opposed to the mask mandate. That is not what the petition was about. You either didn't read it or you're ignorant of what the purpose was, even though it was clearly stated, or perhaps you're intentionally, deliberately misleading people to think that that's what that was about. We were looking out for your power, as well as all local officials' power, to make decisions on a district-by-district, town-by-town, county-by-county manner. I can't understand how you could oppose that considering that it's taking away your power for your own constituents. I mentioned that in my email, I never heard back, but that's fine, that's why I figured I'd point that out. But I guess now in light of the figures I heard, you're not going to fight it because you've already agreed to go along with it. But please, I'd like it noted, that is not a petition to reverse the mask mandate as you stated in your letter and as you are repeatedly saying. That is incorrect, that is misleading, and that is wrong. Thank you.
Jeff Roth. My address is on file. All right, you just approved the September minutes. So when you go on your website, the last time you have minutes posted is June. So where's the July and August minutes? You know it's being livestreamed. I don't want to sit there, I would rather be able to scan through minutes to look for some information, not have to listen to the whole meeting. Second of all, your agenda, last agenda you have posted is July. Now, if you're livestreaming meetings, the people that are home don't see the agenda, should be posted online. So you got July. Now, you know, that may be petty to some people, I don't know what to tell you. Now, the two members of the board who are assigned to the facilities advisory committee, I expect a phone call from either one of you by the end of the week. And that's not a threat, so don't try and misinterpret that. Don't misinterpret my pronunciation and speech patterns, okay? Or accuse me of using harsh language. You're adults, or at least sometimes you don't act like them. So, you know, it's funny, this is a person brought up about the sound system. You should have spent going to meetings years ago if you think this sound system you can't hear. Because I have it recorded in your cafeteria where the humming was so loud, you could not even hear what you were saying. And I have the video evidence of it, and it is going to be in my litigation. And then when I would have to go up and speak, okay, the volume of my voice, and excuse me if the tone was not being calm and measured, you know, that was due to your sound system. For years, public didn't, public did not even want to go to the board meetings because one, they referred to it as a little PTA mom for your coffee clutch, and two, they couldn't even hear a word you were saying. So me expressing concerns and facts are not personal attacks on the board members or the administration, although it's a result of an attack on me personally violating my right to privacy when Shari, shout out to Shari, "Oh, Shari, she don't like it," had me investigated by the FBI and the Nassau County Police. How'd that work out for you? When the police told you I was correct? Right? And I have nothing but respect for my, for the police force. So here we go. Let's see, what else do I have here in my little notes of scribblings? Your comprehensive safety plan, which now you post online. I don't see any part where I brought up on last meeting, the last meeting, where you have the policy of how you're going to, you know, about your video surveillance and how you protect that surveillance and protect evidence in the event of something happens. So for example, you had litigation where two girls, and it was well-known by security, got into a fight in the crossroads of the high school, and one got a concussion. And mysteriously, that camera footage disappeared, just like the other, the other one I was talking about.
Mr. Roth, Mr. Roth, we're, we're just over the time, so if you could just finish that, please, thank you. Thank you very much.
You have not left open ample alternative channels of communication of the information I wish to relay and question. So like I said, I expect a phone call from whichever board members that are assigned to the facilities advisory committee by the end of the week.
Come on, George, you're going to mess with our EV.
We did it. College education, that's what that gets you. George Andriopoulos, 21 Wallen Avenue. Two things I want to talk about. One is, I just want to remind everybody in the community, Saturday, October 9th is TEDx Farmingdale. It is our third annual TEDx Farmingdale event. I am super, super proud of this event. Thank you. We actually have one of our alumnus in the back, Jim Hughes, from TEDx Farmingdale 2019. It's, it's an incredible, incredible event. We try and showcase the best that Farmingdale has to offer, the incredible ideas that come out of this town. You know, I'm so proud we're in our third year. We hope next year to be back in the schools when, when COVID is in the past. But we're having a nice intimate event this year, 50 people at Charlotte Speakeasy. There's going to be a livestream that we're announcing tomorrow, so anybody that wants to watch can do so. The other thing I want to bring up, I don't know why I'm holding this. The other thing I want to bring up is just, you know, as, as a person that grew up in this town and, and really, really cares about the well-being of this town, you know, what's been going on here these last few months has been just crazy, you know, with these conversations. I want to applaud the parents honestly, you know, who come out to advocate for their kids, because what wouldn't we do for our kids, right? And, and I've had some thoughtful conversations with some of these people and look, right? When somebody's advocating for their kids, you know, it, it becomes so important to you and, and there's a fire in your belly and you speak your truth. We may not always agree on everything, but if we can work together to get things done without the fire and the brimstone, without the pitchforks, that's how we can accomplish things. This, you know, livestreaming on your Facebook to gaslight, you know, as in the June meeting, I watched. I watched you going around gaslighting, asking people questions. That's not Farmingdale, right? That's not what we do here. The, the previous talk, that's not what we do here. That's, that's bringing people into our house that are not here for the right reasons, right? When we stand up and we do things that we care about and we go about it the right way, that's when we get things done. That's when we teach kids like this, who come out here, who care so much about something, and they come out and they speak up for themselves, and that's what we are teaching our kids, doing it the right way. So we're proud of you. And I just wanted to say that. I think, you know, I think if we all begin to open up lines of communication, we're a lot more in common than we thought. Thank you.
George, 21 Wallen Drive. No, Eric. I just want to go, go when George is back there because we and he have been good friends and we grew up and graduated together, as some of you up there know. And we like, we do differ in opinions and we agree on many things, but we always have dialogue, and that's the most important thing. Just not in a lecture, but in a thoughtful way, some advice to the board in terms of what I've seen happen in Farmingdale is, and it might be a legal thing, and it might be something that I don't know per se, but the inability to respond to people in a quicker manner, the inability to divulge info sometimes when in some regards you're probably on our sides, but you just can't say it. And it's a little bit hard for people to understand when they are passionate for their kids. I love this town, and I wouldn't move out of this town unless I'm going to Florida. So it's not that I would ever move out of any town. This is the best town in New York, it's probably the best town in the country, honestly. But what's going on in the world and America per se has made everything difficult. But for you guys to understand that as, as passionate and as angry as people are getting, it is for their kids, and it is because there is a black and white side of everything, and we see that these kids are maskless and amass. And then we make these pamphlets and we work really hard to show it to you, and they get dismissed. And that's why I think she was a little bit upset, and maybe I'm misconstruing her if she said that. But it's just upsetting when we put this together and it's not a mask mandate, or a mask letter, and it's regarded that way. We just want you guys to have control. We don't want the state to have control. Every town is different. I know that towns on the North Shore, everybody at the meeting would say they want their kids in masks, they want six feet away, and they want to make sure that. And that's fine. This is our town, and we need to handle it the way we want to handle it, and the way we feel is right. And right now, the state hasn't let anyone do that. So that's really what's happening. So I appreciate how hard your job is, and I really appreciate how hard it was, because none of you has really signed up for it, because you did this before the pandemic, except for who got elected last year. But regardless, it's very hard, and I understand that. So I'm not here to fight with anyone, and I want to know, I respect all of you, and my hand is out to help you in any way. And part of that is in the ability to, I think, address the town in a more human, humanized manner than as if we're just a lawyer and constituent type of thing. So thank you all.
Okay, if nobody else would like to speak at this time, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out this evening. Thank everyone for voicing your concerns. And I would call for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.